Pollen season is here, and Premier Heating and Air has rebates on new units starting at $1,000. Indoor air quality products are free with the purchase of a new unit, and all types of financing are available for new units and for repairs. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company. Log on to dublin.premierishere.com or call 478-326-333. And for a limited time only, enjoy a one-time exclusive offer for new customers with our dispatch fee waived on your next repair. So call or log on today. Premier is here.
This April 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called to order. I would ask for Pastor Jamie Paul to provide an invocation for us. Please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge to the flag.
Thank you, Mayor Knight. May we bow heads and pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this gathering tonight as we come. We act that we seek your guidance, your wisdom, and your understanding. We thank you for our mayor and the city council members and all the employees of Dublin City. And God, we pray that all decisions we made in the best interest for the residents, and we thank you for guiding us and leading us in all things that we do in your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome you all to this April 3rd meeting of the Dublin City Council. We're going to begin this meeting with a special moment of appreciation for one of our employees who is moving on to a different position right now. She has been our town planner for the last three years and has done an amazing job, and we just wanted to take a moment to show some appreciation to Tara Bradshaw as she finishes her time with the city and moves on to work with the Georgia Municipal Association. Tara, if you'd like to come up for a moment, our mayor pro tem, Sarah Colby, has a small gift for you, and Mr. Powell will read a statement.
So Tara started with the city on April 1st, 2022 as city planner. I think you were my first outside hire since I came on as city manager. She took the job, really ran with it. We didn't have a city planner before that, and she came in and just molded the whole department, really, the planning and development department into what it is now. It's one of the highest functioning departments of the city, and she's done a fantastic job. She oversees, for those that don't know, there's a lot that falls under the city planner. She oversees building inspections, code enforcement, community development, grants, and building maintenance, and that's a pill right there. In her time here, she spearheaded and coordinated our traffic calming efforts. She's provided guidance to our land bank, zoning boards, historic review boards, and as well as the city council. She is single-handedly responsible for the city being awarded over $7 million in grant funding for projects that would have never occurred had she not been willing to put in the long hours to draft excellent applications on behalf of the city. Those include the O'Conne Gym Project, the renovation project happening at O'Conne Gym, the Madison Street Project, and the RACE Planning Grant for our Connect Dublin multimodal planning project. She's been a passionate leader for the city in bringing change and improved living conditions for some of our most impoverished neighborhoods, as well as preserving and protecting our existing neighborhoods and protecting them from inconsistent developments. We won't be able to replace you, Tara, and I know that. And I know the impact that you've had on the city is going to last for many, many years to come, and the things that you set in motion, I want you to know that they're going to be realized for many years from now. And we do appreciate you and everything you've done. I hope that you'll accept this little token of our appreciation. I know that one of the things you're most proud of is the work to get the O'Conne Gym renovated, so this is a small little token of the gym for you.
Thank you, and Tara loves Dublin, and I know that you will continue to work to improve our community in your new position with the Georgia Municipal Association. Thank you for your years of service. All right, we'll now move on to the approval of the March 20th, 2025 city council meeting minutes. You've had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes in your packet. Do we have any changes or modifications?
Make a motion for approval.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number two on the agenda, approval of bills over $15,000. Those bills are in your packet. Do you have any questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Smith, a second from Councilman Griggs. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm Brian Baysmore, president and CEO of Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County. We would like to invite you to come by and experience a welcoming banking environment. Come by today and have a cup of coffee, and let us talk with you about our many products: savings accounts, checking accounts, CDs, and our many loans. You're more than just a number to us, you're family. Come by today, Community Bank of Dublin, Lawrence County, member FDIC and equal housing lender.
It's more than just your lawn. It's your grass kingdom, your green canvas, your fair way to heaven. It deserves the Kubota Z400. With class-leading speed, agility, a powerful transmission, simple deck height adjustments, and legendary Kubota quality, when you need comfort, convenience, and performance, then you need the professional-grade Kubota Z400. Visit your local Kubota dealer today.
Item number three of the agenda is approval of purchases over $15,000. We have five items on the agenda this evening for purchases over $15,000. We'll deal with those in a single motion, but at this time, we will have Mr. Powell give us some background information on the backhoe loader for the sewage treatment plant, and then we'll have Tara Bradshaw give us information about the cycle four traffic calming, and then Mr. Powell finish out the final three items. Mr. Powell.
The first item is a backhoe loader for the water distribution division of the water utility. We'd like to purchase a 2024 model JCB 3CX 15 Super 109 horsepower backhoe from Briggs JCB out of Tifton, Georgia for $136,967.05. This will be paid for out of the water fund, and it was budgeted, we're slightly over budget, but there are sufficient funds to cover that. The next item is cycle four traffic calming, and there's two actual purchases within this item on the agenda. The first is the striping that's needed to be painted on the road for speed cushions to be laid down, and that is from Midstate Striping for $15,600. And the other is for 17 speed cushions totaling $19,343.09. The roads that were studied and will be involved in the traffic calming effort were Rutland Drive, Mockingbird Drive, Riverview Drive, Ray Street, Woodridge Road, Cascade Drive, Green Street, Vernon Street, Duncan Street, Ridgewood Avenue, and West Avenue. And if I could ask Tara if you will step up and kind of give us some more information on the traffic calming efforts here.
Glad to, thank you. So we just completed our cycle four. Your cycle four report is available and will be available on the website for citizens. I'll briefly go through it quickly for the benefit of our town. We have 11 streets that were studied that Josh mentioned. Seven of those, we found during the traffic study warranted having some action taken on them. That was either due to high speeds or high volumes on those residential streets. Two of those need to be looked into a little bit further. Engineering and the traffic calming team will be taking a little bit further action to study those further and gather more information from citizens. So seven streets will receive speed cushions if the council approves it. There will be three on Rutland Drive, three on Riverview Drive, two on Ray Street, one on Cascade Drive, two on Cascade Circle, three on Green Street, three on Duncan Street. These are recommended by the traffic calming team and engineering, again, after seeing the number of cars and the speeds at which those cars are traveling through some of our neighborhoods. If any citizens wish to have their streets studied, they can simply go on the website or call our engineering or planning and development offices, and we'll be happy to add those streets to the list to be studied. We try to do a baseline data collection first, and if it meets certain warrants, we do recommend speed cushions. Any other questions?
Any questions for Ms. Bradshaw? All right, thank you for your work on that.
The next purchase is our measuring devices, two electronic measuring devices. This will be to measure the level of alum and polylime in the two tanks that we have at the water treatment plant on Parker Dairy Road. This will be from Southern Flow out of Alpharetta, Georgia, in the amount of $19,860.79. This will be covered out of the plant maintenance budget for the water treatment plant. The next item is architectural services for the groundwater plant, which is located on Madison Street. The building was originally constructed in 1935, and there was an expansion done in the 50s, and since then, the building has largely remained untouched. But there are some structural issues with the facility that need to be addressed, and so we need to have an assessment done by an architect so that we can figure out a plan for it and the repairs that need to be made there. Lord Aick Sargent has provided a proposal for those needs that we have as far as the assessment goes, and their proposal is $27,640. It does include a site visit, report and plan, cost estimation, and mechanical, electrical, and plumbing assessment, and they will also provide management services for when we go through the selection process for a construction management at-risk firm. So we ask that council approve that purchase. This was not specifically budgeted, but there are funds that were designated in the 2018 SPOSS for water utility needs, and this would fit within that category. The flight lift station water pumps is a purchase we need for our lift, two of our lift stations for the water utility. We've had two lift station pumps that have suffered catastrophic failure. One is at the West Fraser Lift Station, which is actually a lift station that's owned by the county at West Fraser out in Dudley and is connected into our sewage treatment system by agreement with the county, intergovernmental agreement. We do maintain that for them and bill them for the cost associated with maintenance of the wastewater system there. And so the flight pump that's needed there is from Xylem Water Solutions in the amount of $38,854.20, and that would be reimbursed by Lawrence County. The other one is for a pump, it's a larger pump at the Academy Extension Lift Station, and that is in the amount of $62,634.60. There have been sufficient capital recovery fees collected this year to offset the cost of purchasing these pumps, and staff recommends that you approve those purchases.
All right, thank you for that. As the public knows, one of the most important jobs that the city does is delivering clean water to businesses and residences and making sure that sewage is properly treated and discharged. The city collects water from the Conne River, and it collects water from large wells. The different plants that collect the water from either the O'Conne River or from the wells, some of them were built 90 years ago, some of them were 70 years old, some are 60 years old, and we have spent, this council has authorized millions of dollars in repairs and upgrades to those facilities over the last three years, and it's just sort of a fundamental function of your city government to make sure that your sewage plant and your water plants are operating. There's going to be another item on the agenda tonight, which is for emergency backups for power to those plants. And as we learned during Hurricane Helene, if you lose water, then that's a very serious issue for the town. So these investments are part of making sure that we can reliably deliver the water services and the sewer services. I think that the, most of the funds that are used to pay for this have come either from the ARPA funds that we got from the federal government, from SPOSS funds, which are sales tax dollars, or in this situation, capital recovery fees and user fees that are collected from businesses who put a lot of usage on those pumps. So this is primarily not funded through property tax, but through those other sources of revenue. Do we have any questions for our staff regarding this item, these items?
No.
All right.
Who reimburses?
On the one smaller pump, the 25 horsepower pump, it's a flight pump for $36,854.20. We will invoice the county for that, and they will pay us back.
The West Fraser plant in Dudley was developed as, the water service there was developed through a joint effort between the city and county. So we maintain, we actually are responsible for the maintenance, but there are certain costs that they reimburse as far. Any other questions related to this? All right, if not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve all of them.
Second.
So we have a motion from Councilman Jones with a second from Councilman Brown to approve all of these purchases. Any discussion on the motion? Without any discussion, do we have, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, those measures pass, and we'll now move to item number four, which is the second reading and public hearing on an ordinance to rezonate 16 acres from P Zone to R3 Multi-Family Zone. Mr. Powell.
This is ordinance zoning map amendment 2501, an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 16.85 acres, more or less, of property located at 2778 Georgia Highway 257. It's also parcel 101B087 Dublin, Georgia, from P Professional Zone to R3 Multi-Family Residential Zone. The proposed use, as indicated by the applicant, is for transitional housing.
All right, at this time, we will close our regular council meeting and open a public hearing to receive comments either in favor of or in opposition to the proposed ordinance. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak regarding the proposed ordinance, this is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this ordinance? All right, last call. Is there anyone who would like to speak regarding this proposed ordinance? Okay, with no one wishing to speak, we will close the public meeting and then turn this matter over to council for action. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Smith. Do we have a second? All right, this will be the last call for a second to the motion to approve. All right, this motion fails for lack of a second, so that is, our legal counsel has indicated that if a motion is not seconded, then it fails for lack of a second.
That is correct.
All right, and we will now move on to the next item.
You ready to meet the latest addition to the family? The money you saved us with auto owners helped make it all possible. It really is the best thing that's ever happened to me.
Excuse me?
Third best thing. Third best thing.
Auto Owners offers discounts for life, home, car, and business insurance because they think the more you protect, the more you should save. That simple human sense.
Ask Curry Maffet Insurance in Dublin and Augusta if auto owners make sense for you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics, and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy, and we're just excited to have it, and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Item number five on the agenda is action regarding a grant for generators. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2513, a resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, Georgia to approve and accept the terms and conditions for the Georgia Emergency Management Homeland Security Agency, GIMA, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Hurricane Michael Generator Grant Award, to authorize the execution of documents for the acceptance and administration of the grant to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. We applied back after Hurricane Michael, that was back in 2018, for a grant to fund the purchase of 13 generators, mostly to support our water infrastructure. That's sewage lift stations, that's our raw water pump station at the river, that's our surface water plant and groundwater plant and wastewater treatment plant as well, and there's a few others in there also. It's taken this long now, it's 2025, and we've been noticed that, or I didn't, we have been notified that we have been awarded the grant now, and it is $1,585,600. Of that, $237,840 will be the city's local share responsibility, and so we have to approve the terms and conditions before we can move forward with the grant. Because pricing is likely to have changed since 2018, we're going to bid out for the generators, all of them on the list, and see where the pricing comes in, and we'll either go back to GIMA and FEMA and see if they will increase the funding, or we will have to reduce down the scope of the project to match the funding level.
All right, so this is an item to accept the grant award. This would be accepting 85% payment from the state and federal government for emergency generators for our water utility system. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs. We have a second from Councilman Colby. Any discussion on the motion? If there is no discussion in the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there are any opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. We'll now move to item number six, which is discussion and action regarding an easement for Georgia Power. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2514, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, buying through its mayor and council to execute and grant an easement to Georgia Power Company, set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Pigly Wiggly has installed some new equipment that requires the relocation of some of Georgia Power's lines that serve the gas station right here behind City Hall, and to do that, they're going to have to locate a pole slightly on or right at the right of way of our property on the back lot that runs along Brantley Street between us and Pigly Wiggly, and so they need an easement to be able to access the area so that they can come in and maintain that pole after they set it as needed.
All right, any questions regarding this easement? This is sort of a housekeeping matter. We understand that you have taken a look, your team has taken a look at the location, everything looks satisfactory.
Yes, we've had them adjust the pole as far as we can get them to where it's not in such an obnoxious spot.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones, a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it. All right, we'll now move to item number seven on the agenda, which is a resolution to provide local government support to women in need of God's shelter for a grant application through the Department of Community Affairs. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2515, a resolution by and through the, a resolution by and through the mayor and council of the city of Dublin to give local government approval of an application by women in need of God's shelter, known as wings, to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs for the 2025 Emergency Solutions Grant Program to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Each year, wings as a local community shelter for women applies for grant funding through DCA. This year, the grant amount is $70,000, and they are, DCA requires evidence of local government support. It's a way of validating that the shelter is operating as it should and providing the services that they're indicating they are. In no way does our giving approval or support for the grant application, does it obligate us financially on the grant or to perform under the grant. So this is something that we've done several years now, and we ask that council approve the resolution.
All right, any questions for our staff regarding the wing shelter grant approval? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We'll now move to action number eight on the agenda, which is a resolution to reduce speed limits on certain city streets. Mr. Powell.
This is Resolution 2516, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, buying through its mayor and council to reduce the maximum speed limit on certain streets within the corporate limits of the city of Dublin to authorize enforcement to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes. This is also a part of the traffic calming efforts that Ms. Bradshaw spoke about earlier. The streets where the speed will be reduced down to 25 miles an hour are Rutland Drive, Green Street, and Duncan Street, and this is a required step through state law to reduce the speed limit on those roads. The council has to take into consideration traffic studies as a reason for that and a basis for it, and that information is in your materials, and this resolution will make that effective.
All right. By way of background, we, the city received some information recently about the number of people within the city of Dublin during the daytime. So there are roughly 16,000 people who spend the night in Dublin, live in Dublin, residents of Dublin. Our daytime population for people who are here eight hours or more per day is over 38,000. So that means we have an additional 20,000 people who are in the city for the entirety of the workday. And what has happened over the years is that the streets that are part of the older part of town that are on a grid, meaning that they're connected and open to the main roads, that those have been used as secondary streets for absorbing all that extra traffic. And so these streets that may be in generations past were quiet neighborhood streets are now full of cars. And what we're trying to do as a council is to try to keep those cars on the main roads, and if they do need to go through the streets, is to make sure that they go slowly enough that it can be safe as a neighborhood. This is, of course, means that the people who live in that neighborhood are also going to have to go over the speed bumps or go slower, but that's a very mild trade-off for being able to get the main group of traffic to go on the major roads. So this lowering the speed limit goes along with the speed cushions and goes along with some of the other engineering things that we're trying to do to make sure that our in-town neighborhoods that are part of this whole grid system are protected from the, you know, tens of thousands of people that are here in the day trying to move from one part of town to the other. So with that background in mind, do we have any questions for staff regarding this speed limit reduction? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Colby, a second from Councilman Brown. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we'll next move to item number nine, which is discussion and action on additional travel expenditure for Councilmember Benny Jones. And I think we can, I'll just do this one real quickly. Mr. Councilman Jones is attending a conference at O'Conne Fall Line Technical College. That will incur an additional registration expense. This is part of his training for a council member, and per our regulations, we need council approval for this additional expense. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Brown, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move to, and I want to say appreciate, Councilman Jones for his attendance at various training sessions. I know that you do a lot of training and you bring back to council good ideas and plans for the city, so we appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Tom Dominy. Here at Dublin with Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest-quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From mowing to renei, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin with Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business every day.
First Lawrence Bank invites you to experience banking at its best. Whether you have personal or business needs, we're a full-service bank, big enough to handle all of your banking needs and small enough to provide you with that personal touch you've grown to expect from a community bank like First Lawrence Bank. Looking forward to your future, that's First Lawrence Bank in Dublin and Dexter, member
Item number 10 on the agenda is a discussion and action on surplus for the city, city property that is no longer needed. Mr. Powell, you want to go through the surplus property?
Sure, there's, as you can see there on the screen, there's a clam loader, Old Clam Truck, that Ms. Godfrey's got her, Councilwoman Godfrey's got her name on. We'll leave the CD seal on it for you.
Well, actually, let's stop right here. I know that we've received, myself and council members have received a lot of questions about debris pickup, and, you know, we had some issues with some of our trucks. Mr. Powell, do you mind giving us an update on what the debris pickup is and our new truck situation?
Yeah, sure. We finally received the clam truck that we had ordered over a year ago, back a couple weeks ago, but we were still down one truck. We normally have four trucks running when we're at full capacity, and we still had one that was in the shop waiting on some parts needed for repair, and that was finally made. So this week has been the first week that they've been operating with all four trucks since we received the new truck. Not, this truck right here is great. You should go bid heavily on it, but we won't be using it any longer. But no, they, one thing too that's kind of hit- But no, they, they, one thing too, that's kind of hit at a bad time when all that happened with the, we were down two trucks at one time, then we got the new one. Now we've finally got our fourth one up. But in the meantime, spring hit and everybody started working in their yard and putting everything out by the road. So there was a lot more to collect. And those, those guys, as they're going around, they collect until they fill up the, the truck. And so depending on how much volume is out there to collect, that's how many times they have to go out to the landfill to empty it out. So, and then on top of that, I know that I've noticed that there are some people that have not done, completed all their cleanup in their yards from even still from some of the hurricane debris. And so we've seen more and more trees being put by the road or sections of tree. And so that also adds to the time it takes them to get that up and get it taken out into the landfill. But hopefully, I know that they were working in the middle school area earlier this week. They've been through the Green Acres subdivision earlier this week, and they've been through Pine Ridge now, and I think they're heading into the Linda Vista area next. So I hope that they get to you, and now that we have four trucks, they'll be running a little more quickly for you.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to know the explanation for why there had been a little bit slower pickup times, because we were down two trucks. But again, we've got a new truck ordered over a year ago, and it's finally on the road, so we're back up to full capacity. I know I interrupted you there, so we have some additional surplus items.
Yeah, the, the one, there's another F-150 that's been surplus. And then the rest are electronic items, including several cameras that the police department used in, for some of their investigations.
All right. So the law requires that we, you know, we can't just give this stuff away. We have to declare it as surplus, and then we'll put it on the GovDills website so that the public can bid on it. And then we'll take that money and put it back into the various funds that they came out of, the departments that purchased it. So, and City Treasurer, Mr. Daniels, is that correct? Is that where the money goes? Back into each department? Great. All right. So do we have a motion related to the surplus items?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Griggs, a second from, was that Councilman Jones that made the second? A second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right. The next item on the agenda is discussion and action on board appointments. We have one board appointment this evening. So Ms. Julie Drigger, who is former mayor of Dublin, has served for many years on the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank Authority. I had the honor of serving with her on that authority before I became mayor, and I know that she did a fantastic job and brought a lot to that position. I did speak with Ms. Drigger. She said that she would like to have, that she does not want to be reappointed to the board, that she would like for another person to be able to bring their perspective, have new ideas and new thoughts brought to that board. And so she is, is stepping down at the end of her term, which has now expired. At this time, I would like to nominate Angela Williams for that position on the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank. Ms. Williams is probably well-known to all of you. She is very active in the Dublin community. She's a graduate of Tuskegee University. She's retired from the VA, and she's active with her sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha. I think that she'll bring a lot to the land bank and recommend her to you. At this time, that nomination requires the approval of at least four members of council. So if someone would make a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones. We have a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. All right.
Thought it was Bill.
Oh, did you make, did you make the second? All right.
Councilman Colby's got a deep voice.
Sorry, I missed that.
We both said it, but it's.
All right. So.
All excited.
Our city clerk, Heather Browning, always asks that I state out loud who makes the motion and the second, so it can be recorded in the minute. So I made an error there. If you can make sure it's corrected to Councilman, is it Councilman Brown who made the second? Okay, great. All right. That takes us to the end of our regular agenda items, and it is time for citizens' comments. If you'd like to make a comment related to matters of the city, this is your opportunity. We have a microphone here. You're welcome to come forward. Come on up. Yes, please. Always good to hear from you, Ms. Wright.
You got gifts? You got gifts?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
I'm going to preempt you for a second. Ms. Wright, I believe is going to talk about her new nonprofit, Future Keys.
No. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jaflyn Denise Jedon White. I live at 603 Hudson Drive, and I will be, I was trying to say, I'm going to make it simple, because three minutes will be up. I would like to congratulate the city council for jobs well done. On behalf of my organization, Future Keys, I am not trying to promote Future Keys, but I am promoting Future Keys, because this is my comment. Future Keys is an organization that is to help senior citizens, mentally challenged and disabled, learn to new technology, also to learn how to use a mobility scooter. And part of my comment is, within the last two days, I've been riding my scooter from Rose Street up Belleville. A lot of people are scared to ride scooters because the traffic situation, as you stated, the 20,000 different people don't want to allow you to even go across the crosswalks without trying to knock me off my scooter. So that's my first comment. I am giving you all a token of my appreciation back to you all. So that's why the pens and the court, so you'll know who it came from. Number two is, in riding around in my car, a 2017 Chevrolet Equinox, some of the streets, I don't care about the speed bumps, I care about the potholes, and I care about the secondary street, especially Mary Street, that is terribly, terribly full of holes. And it is outrageous. If you hit one, that's your rear end, okay? Number three, if I can remember, last but not least, the St. Patrick's Day Parade was absolutely great. One of my comments and one of my suggestions is, Lawrence County is the third largest county in the state of Georgia. And I noticed there are people from the county, people from the city, all of us got together, all the high schools, all the, everybody, and had a great time. But yet, when it came to cleaning up this city after Hurricane Helene, we had to depend on outside sources. So why not we all get together with the county and the people in the city and get their tractors and their backhoes and everything and start cleaning up this city before the rains come? And then we start with the Oconee River in the backyard of our yard. That's my suggestion. You all have a great day. Love you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wright. I had the pleasure of Ms. Wright giving me a quick tour of the Shared Keys nonprofit facility on Rose Street just a few days ago, and appreciate what you're doing to give back to the community, Ms. Wright.
Allen's Heating and Cooling is your licensed Amana equipment dealer. Trust Allen's Heating and Cooling to install and service your heating and cooling unit. Allen services all brands, and with the purchase of a new Amana, offers a lifetime compressor warranty. Call Sean Clark or any of his friendly staff at Allen's Heating and Cooling, your Amana dealer. Amana lasts and lasts and lasts.
This feeling is at our core. Can't explain what it is exactly, but it's out here. A calling to seek new horizons, to progress, to explore, to take our tools and experience and redefine our limits. This need could be ingrained in us from our past, or it could be from knowing above all, time is our most valuable resource, and each step we take is the legacy we create. As the wise that came before us said, no great thing is created suddenly. But sometimes, a patient process reveals a bold revelation. You asked, we engineered. Introducing the new generation of CF Moto Off-Road Vehicles. Ride without compromise.
Hi, this is Greg at Shamrock Honda Kawasaki. We'd love to invite you to come check out the great deals we can give you on the CF Moto U-Force 1000s.
All right. Anyone else have a comment this evening?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you all, the city council, and especially those of you that have supported Erin Garden Club, and especially our First Lady Camellias. This past weekend, I received an email from across the United States from someone, and I just wanted, I'm just going to read it to you right quick, because I was surprised to even receive it. It said, hello, I saw an article in the Camellia Journal about the Mary Beth Busby Camellia. In trying to find where to buy that plant, I came across an internet site that you were involved with providing the whole set of First Lady Camellias to the city not too long ago. Do you know where I can place an order in order to buy the Mary Beth Busby Camellia bush? This came from Antioch, California. I thought it was surprising that we, the City of Dublin, came up on the internet before the man who grafted the Camellias, Mark Crawford. So I just wanted to share that, just that one little internet site from the City of Dublin, reached someone wanting information from our city in order to buy a Mary Beth Busby, and I wished him luck because he's got to order it from Vaud Asta, Georgia. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Then I also want to say, I think the Erin Garden Club is placing the flower arrangements at City Hall, and they really are beautiful, and appreciate the work that, I know that you still work with the Erin Garden Club, and there are many other members of the Erin Garden Club, and what y'all are doing just as a, just as a service to the city, making our City Hall look good, it's, is great, and I really appreciate that. And it's also good to know that good news travels. All right. Does anybody else have any comments this evening? Yes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Should I say good evening? My name's Anita Hill. I received a letter on April the 1st, and this is just a question to you guys about an unknown service line. I'm a little concerned. I don't drink the water, haven't drank the water in years, but is this, they said this is not what's actually happening. It gave a graph, and it says it's just a scenario. So that kind of put me on notice. Is there actually something going on? Have you detected something? Is this like a warning that we're going to be, y'all are going to be looking into the lines to see if they are at the stage where they have, I guess they're so old, or there's lead in them, or I need you to share some light on that, if you would. And while I'm standing here, I'd like to thank Councilman Chris Smith for paving one side of my street. I'm happy. I wanted to personally thank you.
All right. So we discussed this at the pre-council meeting about the survey that, that is going out about the, the water lines. And Mr. Powell, do you mind just providing a little bit of public information about that?
Yes, sir. So the federal government has mandated that, across the United States, that all utility provide, water utility providers do a survey. They're collecting data to find out about the status of service lines to homes and businesses in, in the water system. And the purpose of it is to determine what the material is that is the pipe that is used to connect from the city's main to wherever it's being serviced. And so we, we have been going around and doing that inventory. If your home was built in 1990 or after, there's no, there's no issue there for you. If yours is older than that, then we've had to actually go out, and we're, we're in the middle of doing this now. So some people may have received letters, and some people may not have. If, if you have detailed questions about it, I can't, I may not be able to give you all the details right now, but there's, our water utility director can give you more detailed information and give you some more resources to look at. But essentially, what we're having to do is inventory and provide that data to the federal government, and then we're also have, required to notify you if we, if we find something in particular. And so those letters are going out, and there are steps that you can take if you'd like to now on your own. There is the potential for, I'm envisioning that at some point in time, once the, the government gets all the data, that they're going to determine, okay, we want to fund the replacement of these lines that need to be replaced. So I think that will come eventually. It's just, I don't, I can't tell you a timeline on that. And so, but there are some, we do have some tips that we can provide you for things that you can, if you have a concern about it, that you can do to, to help, you know, reduce exposure if there is a risk of that at your particular property. And I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting if you have any more detailed questions.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment? Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mion Murray, and I want to say thank you all to the city. Y'all did a wonderful job. Mr. Powell, Mr. Powell, not looking.
I'm sorry. I'm having to document that you're coming here doing this. Hold on.
Y'all did a wonderful job at Pritchett Street. It's awesome. It looks amazing. We thank you, the committee. We had a lot of doubts about us getting anything done, but we want to take our youth back, and we want to have something for our youth to do besides go and get, join a game. Our park looks nice, and y'all did a great job on Hillburn. That looks really nice. But the question that I have is that, this is coming up to our fourth year of the tail fairy reunion. Every year, it says that we're going to have lights, and you told us that it was Georgia Power, and we hadn't got it yet. It's been two years, and Hillburn has it all. You all started on us, last year stopped, and went and tore down Hillburn. They had playground equipment for their kids, but we didn't. Hillburn got new equipment, and the park was finished, and ours has not been finished. And we, we want a timeline. It's coming to our fourth year. Last year, we did a ribbon cutting. We want to do an official ribbon cutting. We hadn't seen you all there at our reunions. We had a good time. We don't have any issues. We don't have to call the police, none of that. We don't have that. We have a good time. We give back to the community. We go, the guys come and play basketball. We feed them. Mother's Day, we feed the fish, just give it away. We do things, we have stuff going on there. And my sister played ball over there in the field, and the grass is not being cut, it's not being kept up as promised. The last meeting we had, you said we was going to keep it up, whenever they cut the grass, they wasn't going, everything, when it comes down to time for us to have our reunion, you have to rush and do everything two days before. But it should be kept up during the year, just like every other park. So when we rolled by yesterday, the grass hadn't been cut. The trees are growing back. So the last minute, all that is going to have to be done and rushed, it doesn't look good, when we're trying to, then the grass and the kids and the dirt and the sticks we sitting in the kids. So we want, the timeline for us, we have, I'm not, probably not going to say this word right. Sonja, the lap, the lap house, I ain't saying it right. I didn't like school. So my mama made me go. Okay, so what I'm saying is, we don't want to take away from our park. We have a, say it, Sonja, the lap, the lap that house next to our park. Yeah.
Well, I was.
I got you. Yeah, so I want to say thank you for coming up.
Yes.
Mion and I went to high school together, along with Priscilla Boston, who is usually up here too.
I got to do it myself. Yeah, I gotta do it myself today.
Right, yeah, so you guys have been advocates for the Pritchett Street Park for two, three years, at least as long as I've been here. And so I just want you to know that what you see right now is the beginning, it's not the end, and there are currently plans for restroom facilities and pavilion facilities and additional investments in Pritchett Street Park, as well as at Hillburn. So both parks are, neither park is finished. Both are still gonna continue to receive investments, as have all of our parks. I say, one of the things that I think this council has really been focused on is investing back in the neighborhoods and making sure that each neighborhood has access to a park with, with new equipment or good playground equipment, and that is a safe and, you know, a fun place for kids to be. So we're not at the end of this. I mean, this, it takes a long time, as you know, but I do appreciate you being an advocate for, and holding us to account. You know, there are always things that we can do better as a city, so keep telling us.
Can I ask you, say two more things?
Well, we can't, we can't violate the rules, so we can't, but after, yeah, after the meeting, come see us again, all right? All right, thank you.
At Bank of Dudley, we're your community, your bank, and with seven branches to serve you, there's a Bank of Dudley close by, and there's a familiar face close by. The same familiar faces that you've seen for many years. The same people that you've grown to trust, because that's what community banking is all about. Seven branches, local people, local decisions, local banking. That's the Bank of Dudley, serving our community since 1905.
Spring is right around the corner. You got that huge honeydew list? Come to Roach Farm and Garden. Weeds and stickers in your grass? Beat them back with pre and post-emerge. Come on in Roach Farm and Garden and speak to one of our experts. The time is now to set out trees. Roach Farm and Garden has a huge selection of fruit and ornamental. Storm damage or just need to hem up something? Roach Farm and Garden has all your fencing needs, teaposts, poles, wire, and the tools to make it happen. Did you say cross ties? Roach Farm and Garden has you covered. It ain't warmed up yet. Come on in Roach Farm and Garden and check out our insulated bibs, Carhartt jackets, and hoodies. Do you like french fries or mashed potatoes? We'll get to Roach Farm and Garden and pick up a sack of seed potatoes while they last. Three varieties. You've got a sweet tooth? Roach Farm and Garden has jams, jellies, syrup, and honey. Even got chocolate-covered pecans. Wanna make your own pie? Pick up some fresh pecan halves while they last. Fun season never ends. Pick up your feeders, deer feed, and remember, now is the time to put out your salt blocks. And as always, Roach Farm and Garden has feed for just about everything, including some vet supplies. Remember, baby chicks and ducks arrive in March. Need a place to sit, whether it's in your hunting blind or on the front porch from a rocker to a glider? So let Roach Farm and Garden help you with that to-do list. Got two locations, Dublin and Rochester.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? All right, if there are no other comments, we'll now ask if staff has any comments. Ms. Bradshaw, any comments this evening? All right, Mr. Daniels? Mr. Groover?
No comments.
Our Madam Clerk, Heather Browning?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brown, Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank Tara for her service for the city, worked with you in a lot of capacities, not only with the city, but wish you well in your future endeavors, and I know you'll still stay in touch. Everyone else, we thank you for your comments. We appreciate everything that, everybody that was involved in the month-long St. Patrick's Festival. I think everything went off with pretty much without a hitch, and again, we just thank everybody for being here.
All right, thank you for those comments. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Also, congratulate Ms. Tara Bradshaw on her moving up, and don't forget about the small people. And I'd like to remind everyone that the youth council application is still out. You have to, if you can pick up an application, either online or come by City Hall and get one. It's gonna be April 11, it's due April 11. Very simple application, you can fill it out overnight, don't require a lot, so you can pick up an application, it's time to get involved with our youth council. And I also like to just thank everyone for their comments, and we are, I will say that question you asked about the water, I often brag, not only this council, but I would say even previous council, if you ever know the city of Dublin has never had, as far as I know, bore water advisory. All the cities around us have had one, we have other cities that have one that's around us, but we've been blessed not to have one, because our, our city does, our employees does a good job and take pride in making sure that our, that the water is clean and purified and done right here in the city of Dublin. We came close. Hurricane Helene came close, we had to get some generators to make sure we kept that, kept it going, but we just thank God that we've been blessed with that. So our employees do a wonderful job, I'd like to thank them for all they do, our staff and employees for all that you continue to do. You see them out, please be patient with them, we're picking up your debris, and if you have a buck, you say buck, a furniture, a washer, dryer, stove, put out beside your house, pick up the phone and call City Hall, let them know that, your address, or you go through the MyDublin311 app, take a picture of it, and send it, they'll say they come pick it up. That is free of charge, if it's certain, as long as it's within a certain, it's free of charge, as long as it fit on a pallet, on a, not a pallet, but on a plywood, piece of plywood, and so, I think six feet high. So you get that free buck, so put it out, but please call the city of Dublin, let us know that you have that outside your house, so we can get that picked up, and I will be, I know a couple of houses, I'm gonna go around and take a picture of, because a couple of them I've seen for, for a while, but just be patient. We are picking up debris, and they are doing their job. So our staff and employees are doing a wonderful job, and I'd like to thank y'all for all y'all can do and continue to do for the city of Dublin. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Godfrey?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes?
Just want to say thank you, Tara Bradshaw, for all your efforts, especially to get Oconee Gym renovated. I am so grateful. And all your hard work that you've done with the traffic calming. Also, I'd like to thank Pastor Jamie Paul for the invocation, that was great. Appreciate you. And also, congratulations to Ms. Angela Williams for being appointed to the land bank, and Ms. Drigger for all her years of hard work and service. Mion, I would like to let you know that I am still pushing for Pritchett Park. I'm on the Parks Committee, and we haven't forgotten you. So, thank you, and thank y'all for coming out. And thank you, Mrs. Wright, for our gift, Future Keys.
All right, thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby?
Tess has covered so much of what I wanted to say, but I primarily wanted to tell Tara how I've watched you walk out challenging projects with expertise, passion, and grace, and you were gonna make, you have made a positive impact on Dublin for generations to come. You've made our neighborhood safer and more beautiful, and brought extensive investments to our community that has improved the quality of life for our citizens and for our visitors. So I'm so incredibly grateful for you, and I'm look forward to seeing how you're blessed in your new position, and we're so thankful you're still here in Dublin. Exciting news about Good News Travels Fast. Renee Cook is responsible for a lot of that great news getting shared throughout of our, throughout our community, so we're so thankful for her. And a reminder that Cities Week is next week, and you'll see that information on the website and Facebook, but also, the Great American Cleanup continues this week. Find ways to participate and beautify even the area around your own residence. So in a lot of communities, I see people walking, and everywhere they go, they take a plastic bag with them, because as they walk, they're gonna pick up litter, and I think that it's gonna take all of us to continue to be focused on that, to keep our communities clean and beautiful. So, happy spring.
All right, thank you for those comments, Councilman Colby. Councilman Griggs, any comments this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everybody for coming, and I believe everybody has covered everything else that I left alone.
All right, thank you, Councilman Griggs. Councilman Smith, any comments?
I'm the same. Thank everyone for coming, just a follow-up from everyone. Tomorrow, there is a mural project going on between Saxon and Smith Street from 10:00 to 12:00. It'll be a mural design going into that intersection, so from 10:00 to 12:00, there will be a project going on at Smith and Saxon. And for me, just for, just Tara, this is for Tara, Wars 1 and 2, Tara has been on since she started, and I just want to personally thank you for all the progress you've made in Wars 1 and 2. I mean, they have been tremendous, from Oconee Gym to the streets, to Catherine Gray, to just everything. You've been amazing in the short, short of time you've been here, and I just want to say, really a job well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Powell?
No comments.
All right, we had a few incidents of theft and car break-ins in the past week over in the Stonewall neighborhood between downtown and Middle Georgia College. I just wanted the public to know that the primary people who are responsible of that were placed in custody. Within two days after the event, they were identified and placed in custody. It was unfortunate what happened. Prior to that, I did have a meeting with about eight residents in that neighborhood and discuss the things that the city has done and is continuing to do to try to make that neighborhood safe, safe for families. And one of those things is that we have a police officer who's in a golf cart who travels in that zone. They, that officer actually provides reports of the people that he meets in the neighborhood, that he talks to, kind of getting to know everybody in that zone there, to try to provide a sense of safety and some eyes on the street. This is an experiment through the police department, and so far, I think it's, it's gonna hopefully yield some positive results. Also, the Ring Camera System, it's not necessarily a Ring Camera System, it's provided through CINGO, is a program that we started a couple of years ago at the city, that if you live in a neighborhood that you've been impacted by crime or break-ins or something like that, you can ask our police department for a free camera system, and the city will actually install that camera system for you. And the only thing is that if there is a criminal incident, you would agree to share the video from that camera with the police department. If you didn't want to share the video, that's fine, you would just then have to start picking up the cost of the system. But this is a way that people maybe who don't have the means to get a camera system, live in a high-crime area, they can get a camera system, and you have total control of that camera system yourself. The police department doesn't have access to it, but it would help provide sense of safety and also some video footage in case of an actual crime. I know that I met with a family in the Scottsville neighborhood after a shooting over there, and that family did end up getting a camera system, and I think that they were happy, happy to receive that, and that that has been helpful to the police department. There is a family in the Stonewall neighborhood that also received a camera system. There are others throughout the city that have been installed, so I just want everyone to know that we're trying to do some creative things. We're never gonna end all crime. That's, you know, those are some big issues, but what we can do is help our neighborhoods become safer. We can help the police by investing in technology. We can also really emphasize community policing, so that the police officers know who's in the neighborhoods and can get good information when things aren't going right. So we're continuing to take as many efforts as possible to address these criminal issues, and there's still a long ways to go, but I just want everyone to know that we're trying hard, and we're throwing everything that we've got at it. Not just money, but every type of creative idea that we can come up with. If you in the city have a suggestion, if you see something that we're not doing that you think we should be doing, then let us know, because we're open to it. We, you know, we live in these neighborhoods, too. We live in this community, so we're affected by this as well. So everybody has a role to play, and if you've got an idea, please share, and we'll try it out. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.